I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. There are no minutes to accept from the previous meeting. First item on tonight's agenda, and I apologize everybody for my voice tonight. God's Grace Ministry, this was originally, this is a list for discussion and action for proposed site plan and special permit for change of use to include place of worship within the shopping plaza known as Oak Clover Mall. Said property is located at 228 Route 32 in Central Valley, it's known as the Village of Woodbury, tax maps, section 229, block 1, lot 28. Is the applicant here from God's Grace? Step up, sir. Good evening, how are you, sir?
Pretty good, and you?
Good. So I think the last thing we have outstanding with your application is the sign, correct?
Right.
Okay. You don't have a copy with you tonight, right? I know we got an email to us, I didn't know if you happened to print one out and bring it as well.
I didn't print one out.
Okay. All right. So did the board get a chance to look at the sign that was?
Yeah, I was able to.
There were two items that did come up when Natalie looked at it, it was colors and size, correct?
Correct. So, do you want me to elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so the code permits a maximum of four colors per sign. The board has an opportunity to modify the permitted number of colors if they find them non-distracting to drivers, or if the colors are the same shade, or different shades of the same color, and also found to be non-distracting. So, the board should consider the rendering that was provided to you and authorize a modification if you find that appropriate. The second issue is with respect to size, so the code allows wall signs, I think it's 20 square feet maximum. The applicant's current proposal is 16 square feet, which is complying. We just wanted to note that in a prior review of a different rendering, the dimensions were like one and a half by, or I'm sorry, one and a quarter by five feet, and that one and a quarter dimension hung below the existing fascia. So, I think the board had discussed that that was not preferable, that they would prefer it to match the other signs in the strip mall. So, we think that that could be a condition of your resolution, if you think that's appropriate. I know council did prepare a resolution for you to consider, so again, I think those are the two issues, the size and the number of colors.
Thank you, Natalie. The colors, when I looked at it, it's really just shades of blues, the colors I take no issues with. What about the overall sign area with the?
I don't have an issue with it.
We're okay with it being over the, the board's okay?
Well, I thought you adjusted, didn't you adjust it so it won't be hanging over the over?
Yes. You did, right? Because we got two, we got an initial, then we got a second one, so the final sign will fit into the holder that's there, right?
Yes, positive.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so?
I'm good with it.
So am I. All right, so did everybody, anybody have any questions for Natalie, for the applicant?
No.
Okay. All right, then I will go into the, we did have council draft a resolution of approval, after several pages of fact and findings. No, you're right. There's more reading to come up tonight, so. Under the findings, the planning board has determined that the improvements proposed as part of this application, the signage appear consistent with the architectural character and design of the surrounding neighborhood. No exterior changes to the existing structure are proposed. The proposed signage, subject to the conditions noted below, will blend into the existing character of the neighborhood. Said design, colors, and materials are hereby approved. No building permit or CO shall be issued except for structures consistent with the listed materials. And then we get into the specific conditions. All conditions of prior approval in connection with this property shall continue to be in full force and effect, and this resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approvals and conditions except as specifically set forth in this resolution. No building permit shall be issued authorizing the construction or renovation of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by. The Architectural Review Board is part of this approval, nor shall any CO be issued for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviation from such renderings will require further planning board review. Prior to the issuance of the CO, the applicant shall be required to conform with requirements in the New York State Fire Code for place of assembly to the satisfaction of the building inspector. Prior to the signing of the plans by the chairman, the applicant shall comply with a memorandum to the village engineer dated July 29th, 2022, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. And then the, we are okay with the colors, so that will be a condition. You'll add four, Kelly? Four B?
Yeah, I'll note that, I'll note that the colors have been accepted, acceptable in the findings, and then if you want in that, oh, there I am. If you want in that where I put in signage condition, we can have it be limited to the size that he proposed, so that it fits in there. The condition has already been satisfied, but at least then it's clear for the building inspector for any inspections.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, can I offer a motion to accept the resolution of approval? Same way, Tommy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you're done, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Been a little bit of a road, but we're there.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good night, sir. Next item on the agenda. Habestick of Orange Public Hearing for Proposed Site Plan and Special Permit for Change of Use to an Indoor Commercial Recreation Facility. Said property is located at Eat Laura Lane in Central Valley, and is known as the Village of Woodbury, tax map, section 226, block 1, lot 24 dot 2. Just before we open the public hearing, and before we have the applicant come up and just give us a brief overview of what's going on at the site, there are a number of people here tonight, I'm going to suppose, being some of the stuff I saw on social media, it is for this application. I'm going to ask that everybody be respectful of their comments, their comments are directed to this board and not to the applicant. This board and the applicant will do the best to answer their questions, your questions as possible. When you do come up, I ask that you state your name and where you are from, whether it's Woodbury, Central Valley, Chester, wherever that is. You'll be limited to about three minutes, being we do have a full room tonight. And with that said, the documents and this application have been on the website for several months now, we have gone through several iterations of plans and reviews, so a lot of the questions that people may have have actually been answered in previous planning board meetings. So with that said, I ask that the applicant please come up to the podium and just give us a general overview of the intended changes, please, sir.
Hi, I'm John Petrosini, the engineer for the applicant. As you're probably aware, there is an existing auto salvage yard located at Eat Laura Lane. The current proposal is to abandon that salvage use. Abandoning that would involve removing all of the stored vehicles that are currently on the property. The existing structure would then be repurposed to house an after-school program. It would be classified as an indoor recreational use. The traffic on the proposed use would be limited to four buses per day. They would bring all of the children in by bus, and then at the end of the program day, bring them all home by bus. Passenger vehicles would be limited to staff members. So, we will be limiting traffic. We have agreed previously to provide a couple of stop signs as additional traffic control. There are no physical changes to the property proposed, with the exception of cleaning it up to get rid of the existing cars that are stored there. The facility would be used as is, and the applicant is aware, if there were any changes desired in the future, they would have to return to this board to make that request.
Thank you, sir. I will answer a few questions that I've seen come up ready. The applicant has already undertaken environmental remediation that is required. Those documents have been submitted to the building department and could be reviewed if wanted to be, and they have also agreed that if this project goes forward, they will extend an eight-inch water main underneath the train trestle into the project site to provide fire hydrant and proper fire protection. With that said, I will go row by row, and then I'll hit the back of the building. So again, three minutes, state your name, where you're from, and I ask that your comments come directly to the board. So anybody in the first row wishing to speak on this application? Anybody in the second row wishing to speak on this application? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Gordon McClant. I'm halfway down the road on Central Valley, and I actually just heard about this recently. I have a couple of questions regarding the traffic itself, because it's actually a very quiet neighborhood, a lot of kids, a lot of kids are playing. We already have people kind of cutting through and speeding, which is not, you know, ideal. If they do break and go past the limits of buses and cars, do we have any way to actually limit that, or kind of combat that?
So this site, this use is permitted by what they call a special permit. So that requires them to come to this board and request that the site be approved for this use. With that, the conditions that the applicant spoke about are put into the resolution of approval if approved. Once a year, that permit can be reviewed if there are complaints received by this board or to the building inspector's office. Those complaints would have to be in writing, and they would be filed with the building inspector. If enough complaints are filed with the building inspector, this board does have the legal authority to actually pull the applicant in mid-year and ask them about questions that are going on on the site. So there are, there are measures in place if a site does not follow what they're approved for, but keep in mind, it is, you know, a governmental process, and nothing happens overnight, and it will require that the public file written complaints with the building office.
And one addition is that those complaints have to be founded.
Yes.
The building inspector will do the investigation, make sure it's a founded complaint, and then they would get, if there's enough of them, they will come to the planning board to be re-reviewed for that issue.
Right, sorry, that's correct.
The building inspector has to actually investigate and be able to prove what's going on.
It makes sense. In regards to the water main, will they be ripping up, what road are they taking up to get to that?
I believe it's Peroni?
It'll be a portion of Laura Lane.
But where, no, where are you hitting the main from?
At the intersection.
Of Laura, and?
Right by the bridge there. Okay. In regards to the amount of work done to clean up the site with cars and things, do we have any idea how long that might take, or how long?
As far as them vacating the site?
Just because there's going to be a lot of things coming and going.
That would be something that would be between the applicant and the owner, I mean, whatever they, like whenever you sell a house, right? If you have six months to get out, you have six months to get out. That's not something we could tell them to do, that's whatever they agree with in the sale of the property.
Wouldn't it all in one day go?
Of course.
Your concern is a lot of traffic getting out. It will take a little bit of time. There's a lot of vehicles there, and they have to find places to set them.
Fair enough.
But it won't drag out for years.
That's just out of one of seven months of trucks and cars coming up and down the road. That's it for my questions, so.
All right, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody else in the second row wishing to speak on this application? All right, well, now the rows kind of get a little mixed up, but, so I'm going to go with like the third row-ish?
Ellen Hoffman, Central Valley, New York.
Good evening.
How are you? I have many questions, but one of them that's very pertinent to where I live, is there is a drainage ditch running along the southern end of the property. This drainage ditch eventually empties into Woodbury Creek. The people that are there now have been told that it's either once a year or twice a year, that ditch must be cleaned out and maintained. Will these people do the same?
We have discussed it with the applicant, I believe they are willing to provide an easement to the highway department, so that our highway department can get in there and do the necessary maintenance and clean the ditches and the drains out as needed.
So the highway department is doing it?
Yes.
Okay. You said buses.
Correct.
Four buses a day?
Correct.
During the whole day, in the afternoon?
On a normal day, their business will operate after school until about 6:00 P.M. On a day where there's no classes, for whatever reason, on a weekday with no classes, they would come in early in the morning, 9:00 or so, and then fully at 6:00, there would be four buses bringing kids in, and then four buses bringing kids out.
Noise levels, these are going to be indoor all the time, or are there outdoor activities?
The proposed use is specifically per town zoning, indoor.
Yeah, there is no outdoor, there are no outdoor modifications being requested during this.
So there'd be no loudspeakers, there's no loud music, no loud?
No.
Anything going on?
No, but they're strictly using the inside of the building.
Okay. My other question is getting these buses underneath that one lane underneath the railroad there. That's a feasible thing?
Yeah, I mean, they're type C buses, I think they're 11, either 10 and a half or 11 feet on the clearance. Their traffic consultants have gone out, and our traffic consultant has agreed, though the bridge is marked at 11 feet, it's actually like 12.7 and 12.4 is the actual height. Right now, they can get front-end loaders and oil delivery trucks under that bridge without problems, so a bus will not have an issue getting under the bridge.
The traffic volume on Valley Avenue. Now, you're saying after school. We have a problem now with a lot of cars being parked on Valley Avenue.
Okay.
Makes it very difficult for the school buses to get even around and let the kids off so that they can go wherever they need to go. Where you're bringing more buses on this road, you're creating more, I want to say, hazard sort of thing, because, I mean, it's, there are cars parked all over the road.
I could, my answer to that would be you're actually going to be lessening the traffic because you're going from a site that receives deliveries, site that receives tow trucks on an unscheduled basis, to a site that will be strictly operating within a certain parameter. We know exactly when the buses are going to arrive, we know when they're going to be leaving, and we know how many employees are going to be there. So there'll actually be less traffic on the road than there is today.
There's not that many tow trucks and whatever from this junkyard at this point. So, the buses on an everyday basis will create more traffic.
If I, but if I believe correctly, the buses are dropping off and staying, right?
Correct.
Right, so the buses are going to come in, drop the children off, park at the facility, they'll be there, they'll be there until the end of the operations, and then they'll leave. So they're not coming in, dropping off, and coming back out. So the bus is going to go in, drop the kids off, there's a dedicated parking spot for the four buses in the back, they'll leave the bus there, when the children are done, they'll put them on the bus and they'll send them home. So the bus is coming in once and coming out once.
So you're only using this Laura Lane entrance and exit for the buses and whatever state cars?
Whatever employees are going to be going there.
For our site.
Yeah. Now, there are other businesses and other properties on that site that we have no control over, but as far as this site traffic plan is, yes, that is the plan. That is what they've come to this board and requested and represented.
Okay, so you're not going to use the other dirt road that goes from that piece of property out to Smith Clover Road?
That is MTA property, they shouldn't be using that road.
Oh, that was one of my concerns.
Yes, it's, yeah.
It should not be there.
It's actually gated at the Smith Clover Road side. Typically, the MTA has it locked and closed, but it's actually not there. That's a right-of-way for the railroad.
Okay, and the other thing was, are you going to clean up all of the environmental stuff from the junkyard? The oil, the gas, grease?
Yes, we are in the process of getting a D E C certification.
Mm-hmm.
That remediation has been completed. Work has already been done on that. Our environmental consultant has given the okay on that. We are currently in the queue for D E C to review that work.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the same row that this young lady was sitting in? Okay, it's going to be the fourth, or three and a half or fourth row, behind this young lady, anyone in that row wishing to speak on this application? Fifth row?
Good evening, Maria Hunter.
Good evening.
Heile Mills, Woodbury, whatever you want to call us. It's bittersweet to see that this business that's been there for all these years is leaving. They were before the planning board when I was sitting on it. We went and did great pains to make sure that they followed everything to specification. And over the years, I've never heard of any problems down there. I'm happy that someone else is coming in to use this building, so it's not going to be an empty building and left to deteriorate. And I know from prior experience with this road, like you said earlier, trucks have gone in there, oil trucks, deliveries, whatever, so, and if they were smart, they would come down Smith Clover Road, then make the right-hand turn, and because the way the bridge is angled, it'd be best to come down the other way from the north side instead of the south side to go into that place, and I'm sure they're aware of that.
I'm sure once they have to make one key turn with the bus, they'll figure that out.
And as a former school bus driver, that's the route that I would take, so thank you for allowing this project to go forward.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wish to speak on this application? Go ahead.
Sorry I'm late.
It's okay.
My name is Ann McGinnis. I reside on Estrada Road, which is close but perpendicular to the Valley Road Project, which I believe is what we're speaking about.
The Laura Lane?
Whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I understand that Hamaspic wants to utilize this property to host children, which I found was just surprising. I guess there were some letters going around the neighborhood about it. I got one, third party, because I'm busy, I don't have time to keep on top of all of these petitions that are going between, for our town, but some of these projects that are being brought are just not being followed through. I have some concerns with this project and the funding, and putting kids where there was a junkyard, I mean, that's crazy. I hope that you do, you know, your due diligence and that you're not putting children in harm's way. Oftentimes, these projects are driven by monetary reasons, which I'm sure this is, and I just hope that you do your homework. Otherwise, we'll be sitting there, watching you, and holding you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Let this young lady in then.
My name is Mary Hoffman, and I live in Central Valley. So, just moving forward, because this is the first that, you know, I've heard about it, so I'll take ownership of maybe not coming to prior meetings, but moving forward, how can we stay informed about the progress and things that are happening with this?
In this project, or any project in general?
Well, you know, I mean, I guess overall about the town, would it be to attend these meetings, is that the only way? The first I heard about it was this letter that we got this week.
So you're, okay, so you got the public hearing notice, because you're within the radius, so, yeah. That is a legal requirement that any project that is before us that has to have a public hearing, those residents within the radius will be notified via the letter. As far as, as far as what's going on, all of this board's videos are posted on the YouTube site for the village, they're usually posted within 48 hours. All of the current applications before this board are all on the village website, all of the documentation associated with them are on the village website, whether it's been reviews by our, reviews by our professionals, documents that have been submitted by their, the applicant's professionals, site plans, narratives, required environmental or county referrals are all on the village's website. If you go to, there's going to be a tab that says departments, and then building department, underneath the building department tab, there's a planning board. When you open that up, it will show you.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with that.
There's 57 open projects.
I guess my concern is that this is pretty well into the project right now, and this is the first notice that we've received as being right in that location on this project.
And that is how the state law requires the project to be reviewed and noticed. There are usually several sessions back and forth that are all open to the public and anybody can attend, where both this board, the applicant, and our professional will go back and forth and go usually through several reiterations of a plan that's brought before us. Typically, the first plan this board sees is not how it ends up when it's finally, if it is approved. When the application is through that review process with us and the board and our consultants, we then are required to open it up to the public to get public feedback on that proposed change, what in this case, you know, the change in use here, whether it's this, or a subdivision, or a new store, anything like that. The reason that it's done is because bringing the public in too soon could, there's a lot of back and forth. There are, our consultants usually issue many memo letters saying things need to be changed, things need to be brought up to compliance, so this is, gives the public the best view of what the project is potentially going to look like in its final and approved stage, and allows you to come in and give your feedback on what that project's going to be.
Well, I have to say, I'm concerned that, you know, you talk four buses, I hope that's the reality, and, you know, that there are no issues with this project, so I guess we just have to wait and see how it unfolds and document any concerns we may have. I have a young child who plays on the street with many other young children. This will all probably be happening, I don't know, do you have a timeframe?
It's all subject to the approval process.
So, any timeframe?
As far as when it could be approved?
And when things could be?
Well, that's actually subject to a couple of things, if I could jump in from there.
Yeah, go ahead.
So their next step would be to obtain conditional approval from this board. If it goes through that and they meet all the requirements, they'll get conditional approval. Then they have to satisfy all of those conditions, and some of those conditions require outside agency approval. I don't know which agencies here, but we list them all just to be, you know, careful. And then it really is subject to that outside agency's timeline. So sometimes the D E C is six weeks behind, sometimes the Department of Health is, you know, 90 days, we can't, we don't have any control over that. I don't know if you have an estimated time when you'd like to open, assuming that all of those things were taken care of? Maybe four months?
They haven't really gotten far enough to pick an opening date, just knowing.
Okay. So they have to go through all of that. I would say you could probably, in terms of knowing about the planning board's review status, you could follow up with the building department, or the planning board website, but we have no idea on any of the outside agencies.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just have to wait and see how everything works out. Thank you.
Sir?
Trevor McGinnley, Central Valley.
Good evening.
I just had a question related to the proposed number of buses and how that's going to be monitored, and if there's any future growth anticipated with this project, and how we would go about either approving or disapproving, or bringing forward concerns regarding the actual traffic that goes through?
So as far as the use of buses, it's overall, typically it's scouts honor, that they said they're going to be, they're going to do what they said they do. Like I was explaining to the other young lady before, there is a process for the public if they do notice that it's being abused, to grieve with the building department. The building department could then, and would investigate, and if they do find that they are found not in compliance, they would be brought back to this board for review.
Okay.
As far as expansion, same thing goes there. They're only being allotted, the traffic, the children, all that stuff, water usage is all based on what they have presented to this board, and that is all documented on the website for everybody to go and review. If they wish to make a change to that, if they want to put in outdoor fields, if they want to start using other parts of the site, they would need to come back before this board, and they would have to modify their special permit. And then again, other review process, traffic, and everything else would be taken into consideration. Public hearings would be held, and then we'd be back to where we are tonight.
Okay, so can you maybe further explain the process in terms of grieving the potential abuse of the traffic?
There is, there's a form on the website, it's a complaint form. You would download it, fill it out, sign it, send it to the building inspector. You would download it, fill it out, sign it, send it to the Building Inspector's office. He would take your complaint, and he would go out and he would, I guess, probably sit there and count the number of buses, or look to see if there's potentially video cameras or something in the area to see. If he could substantiate that there are more buses than that have been approved, he would notify our council. Our council would then get ahold of us and the applicant, and we would first try to remediate it without making a big to-do about it. You know, talk to them, say, hey, listen, what has happened? Why are there 12 buses instead of four buses? If they turn around and say, well, we're having 100 children there now, we've changed the use of operations, they would be then directed to come back before this board, and we would start the approval process all over again.
And they also would be in violation of their approved special permit and site plans, so that would also have to go to justice court.
Okay. And what number of substantiated complaints would you have to have before that process occurs?
There's no number. It's really in the Building Inspector's discretion.
So, there's no predefined number?
No.
So, this is a discretionary operation?
Yes. If he believes that it needs to come back to the Planning Board for further review, yes.
How is a application and approval for a set number of buses that needs to be reviewed a discretionary process?
No, that's not a discretionary process. I'm saying the complaint process to then, if they have a number of violations you're asking about, what he deems to be, you know, a substantial number of complaints to bring it back before this board, that is in his discretion.
Well, again, I don't understand why there's a discretionary component here, because it's delineated very clearly in terms of what their use is.
Yes, and they may get a notice of violation because it happened for one day. They may end up in justice court and have it not happen again. And he's not going to send the applicant back to the Planning Board if it's been resolved after one complaint and a trip to justice court.
So, what's the resolution process then? Or what's the, I guess, what's, if there's a complaint brought forward and there's a noted violation, and they go to justice court, how do we know that it's resolved?
You can follow up with the justice court.
Okay, but then if there's a subsequent complaint?
And there's a subsequent complaint, he will investigate it. If it's based on the same situation, or if it's on a different day, he will investigate it, and he will handle it how he deems appropriate.
I guess, again, I'm a little confused about the deemed appropriate portion.
This is all in his discretion, as part of his job description as the Building Inspector for a municipality.
Okay. Just clarifying here. We have a delineated process and approval here, right? We have a delineated, this is where a change of use, we are approving four buses, but we have a discretionary review process in place. Is that, is that what I'm understanding, or am I misunderstanding this?
Well, I think you're confusing review process, which is before the Planning Board, which they're reviewing, and he has to investigate any complaints. There is a set complaint procedure that is in the village's code. So, you complain, he investigates, that's all said and clear. If he takes them to justice court, there's certain notification requirements, there's certain court procedures that all need to be filed. What is discretionary in this instance is this is a special permit that if granted, the Planning Board includes a condition in there that says if a number of complaints are received by the Building Inspector, you know, they're unresolved, they continue to happen, whatever, he has the discretion to send them back here. He can also repeatedly take them to court. So, if that is in his discretion, that is part of his job, that is part of his job duties, that's all reviewed by civil service and the tests that he takes and his job description. So, as in most jobs, we all have some discretion, and that is within his.
The discretion is really allowed. If we have a bus on-site that breaks down, we have kids that we have to take home. If they bring in a fifth bus that day to bring home these kids, technically we violated our approval. I think that would be reasonable.
Correct.
But it gives the Building Inspector the chance to say, okay, that's why we don't need to pursue that. But if he finds out that, yes, we're bringing in six buses every day, then he can take us to court, tell us that we have to stop doing that, and if we fail to do so, then we'll have us come back here for approval.
Right.
Or to request it.
No, I understand that. I'm not saying like there are not issues that are going to happen where an additional bus may come through. What I'm talking about is an abuse of, you know, discretionary process that's in place that allows for a prolonged period of time where there are six, seven, eight, 12 buses going through that property.
If that happens, I would suggest you make a complaint each time, and each one would be investigated. If that's what your concern is, then you should monitor that.
On a discretionary basis?
No, he is required to investigate it.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anybody else in the room wishing to speak on this application?
Hi, Susan Lynch, Central Valley. Couple of questions. The letter from August 10th states that there's an allowance for growth of up to 75 children being served from 50.
That was the original narrative. There was a subsequent narrative that was...
Has that been revised?
There was one that was submitted in December, I believe. I don't, I don't have the whole folder with me tonight, but there was a second narrative that was submitted to the Building Department and to this board when those questions were raised during the initial review.
So, they've agreed not to grow?
Well, they're being, they can grow, but they'd have to come back. I'm trying to pull them, pull up the...
Okay, so, that's interesting.
I'm listening. I just want to pull up the other narrative.
Yeah, I don't see another one that was posted on the website, because I looked at all of them. Regarding water usage of the, at the site compared to the current water records, how does those numbers compare? Because I don't, I know the previous readings, there's copies of different bills, and then this new water usage says that it's going to be for 75 kids, 1,500 gallons per day. How does that number compare to what was previously being used at the space, especially since we are still concerned with water here, right?
Correct.
They can maybe fit it in one of the exemptions.
Yeah, they're not actually, this application hasn't been waived from the moratorium. They're still required to provide documentation that their water usage would not increase from the previous use. So, if they are going to be using more water than the previous facility, they actually have to go in front of the Village Board and get a waiver for that.
Unless it falls into one of the exemptions, yeah.
Yes.
What, I'm sorry, what?
The village has a water moratorium right now, and there are certain exemptions that are permitted to proceed or are permitted to proceed. If they show that they don't use, that they, the new use doesn't increase the usage of water, or does by 220 gallons per day, is that right?
Something like that.
Something, a number like that.
So, there's an allowance of more than, of 220 gallons per day?
Yes, for one of the exemptions, but I'll let Natalie talk on water.
Just to answer your specific question, based on the meter readings that the applicant provided, we estimate it's 24 gallons per day for the existing use, and the proposed is 1,500 gallons per day. So, this is subject to the moratorium. The applicant will have to file for an exemption request under that process.
Okay, so, they're, they go through this entire process, and they could get stopped, like, at the very end by the water?
This board is not allowed to make an approval until they receive an exemption from the Village Board.
If they receive an exemption, yeah, that's correct.
And it was an 11, 11-10-22, there was an updated narrative that was submitted by the applicant.
Okay, I'll look at that.
Sorry, that's what I was trying to find for you.
Okay, thank you. All right. I did not hear any mention of weekend use. I heard a lot of Monday through Friday, specific. Nothing about Saturday, Sunday.
They have not stated that they would be used on the weekends.
They have not stated that they will not, or they have not stated that they will, or they just have not said anything.
They have stated it would be Monday through Friday during the hours they've listed, and that would be the approval they are currently getting.
So, they're not going to be there on the weekends?
They have not asked for weekends.
Does any business have, in their own discretion, an ability to stay open on the weekend?
They've limited their hours of operation to Monday through Friday. So, by their own representation, they're going to be prohibited from operating on the weekends, unless they modify that request.
Okay. How has the fire, has she been addressed? I know that they, there was a, I guess, they had planned to make an accommodation to have water on-site, and now they're not going to?
Yeah, they've agreed to extend an eight-inch water main underneath the railroad track into the property.
And that's the only concern with fire access and fire service.
With review, I spoke with Chief Burke about the application. The building is sprinkled, so it will have a commercial sprinkler system in it fed by a commercial main. So, it will have adequate fire protection, and they are able to get the tanker and the engine underneath the bridge.
Okay. And then the last thing, like, and I'm sure this is not a question necessarily for you, but more of a comment. I don't understand how a business model of having two hours a day, five days a week, is a sustainable business. Like, how, where is the money coming from to pay for, like, this humongous building to serve 50 kids for two hours a day?
That is not something we can ask. What I can tell you, they are, the organization is a 501(c)(3) charity. Their tax returns are public knowledge, so you can go ahead and Google those and see how much.
I have plenty of others, like, still. I mean, that's, it's just, I don't know.
That's not something we, you know, that's not really something we can ask them about.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room have any other questions for this application? Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm McGinnis, Central Valley. She just, Sue just brought up a question that I didn't even think about. Would this property be, would there be a request to take this property off the tax rolls, considering that's a 501(c)(3)?
That would be up to the applicant. Again, it's outside the purview of the board. And I don't know what the requirements are to make a property tax exempt.
Well, may I address the applicant?
You go ahead.
Is that something that you can answer, applicant?
I have not been asked about that. I'm an engineer, not a lawyer.
Okay.
Or an accountant, so I don't know.
But you're the one representing this project?
Yeah.
No one else is here to represent?
As of now, there is no proposal to take it off the tax rolls.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I have one more question for you. If they decide to change what they're doing right now and go for more busing, or more kids, or whatever, and they go before the Planning Board, will the residents of the area be notified that they're coming back before this board?
It would be subject to a public hearing, and you would be notified, as the residents were notified via the record of paper, and those that are within the 300-foot radius would get the letter.
So, we would find out if they were changing the usage in any way?
Yes.
And we would again be able to comment?
Yes, this board, almost all applications this board reviews are subject to a public hearing. So, we can't just act without having, holding that public hearing.
I have a follow-up.
Yep.
So, it's a large facility, right?
Chris, can you have him come to the podium?
Sorry, yeah. Yeah, it's just our surprise, he's going to hear you, and she yells at me when she can't hear what everybody's saying.
So, it's a large facility. Potentially, what is the maximum?
That would be defined under the New York State Building Code. I don't know off the top of my head, based on...
Ballpark.
I couldn't tell you, because, and this is, this is why, I'm not trying to avoid the answer, but based on the use and the square footage of the building, the New York State Building and Fire Code defines how many people you're allowed to have in there. So, one use, like a gym versus a place of assembly versus a shopping center versus a school, they're all different capacities.
It just seems like, so, we're all here, but you're like, oh, four buses, 75 kids. But we know the reality, moving forward, what it could possibly be.
But that could be, that could be any, that could be any application that comes in front of this board. I mean, landowners have the right to expand.
Which therein lies the problem, which therein lies our concerns. Four buses, 75 kids, great, you know, come around. We know the potential of what this could turn into. That's just the reality.
It is the reality, and all I can say to that, there are legal processes in place under state and local law that gives the public a remedy if they see problems with that.
Such as?
Again, it all has to go through the code enforcement officer.
So, but I'm asking you, code enforcement, like, you guys could just, what if there's no good reason, like, oh, the space is there, we have to approve them there, you know? Okay, so now there's 10 buses, next year there's 20 buses.
They would have to go through, again, a traffic study like they did initially here. They have to be able to provide that the roads can handle the number of buses, there's adequate parking, there's adequate facilities within the building for it. It's not just, it's not just because the building is there, you know, you can have it. There are, you know, there are review criteria that have to be met, whether it's traffic, whether it's water usage, whether it's sewer capacity.
Right, we all know that, because we live by the rules. Okay, but, you know, we have concerns over, unfortunately, we've, past practice has been a little alarming. So, I, you know, I have concerns.
And I, I understand there are concerns. Unfortunately, this board can only act on the information that is presented with, and that's the information that we're being presented to.
I understand. You guys are in, listen, you're doing your job, I get it, but, you know, you have to understand where our concerns are coming from.
And again, I'm here, and that's why I'm trying to tell everybody in this room and in Woodbury, there is a legal process if citizens feel any building. I'm not, let's not just pick on this application. Any building in the Village of Woodbury is not being used the way it was originally approved for. It has to go through the code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer has to be able to validate the complaint, and then there's, like, council is explaining, there's justice court, there's all sorts of things that come after that.
Right, but the problem, so I just feel like, so we have to do our due diligence and hold, if, in the event that there's...
There's three building inspectors and 10,000 properties in Woodbury. I mean, the truth be told, he can't be every place and every time.
No, I understand that, but we're going to have to, like, you know, make sure that, you know, things are going according to plan.
Well, we hope everybody wants to be a good neighbor, and we hope people work in good faith and act in good faith.
You got to have hope, right?
That's how this board has to operate.
Okay. Thank you.
You. Any other questions from this, from the, on this application? Again, I apologize for my voice. All right, so, hearing no other questions from the audience, well, I would like to offer a motion to close the public hearing but accept public comment for the next 14 business days, written public comment for the next 14 business days.
Sir?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, just to the, for the public, what that means is that though this public clearing, hearing is now closed, you have another 14 business days to express your concerns in writing to the Building Department. The Building Department will then forward those to this board before this board makes any other determination.
And just so that it's 14 business days, which actually brings that to February 22nd, just so that everybody knows the actual date.
So, received by, by the Building Department by February 22nd. That's, until, until next time.
All right.
Have a good one, John.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, HLB Enterprises, public hearing for proposed site plan and special permit for interior renovations and conversion of an existing leased space to restaurant use. Said property located Unit 9 of the Old Glory Mall at 95 Mayor Lane, and is known as the Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225, Block 1, Lot 41.
Might just want to give everybody a minute to clear out.
Yeah, just hold on a second if people want to...
You don't have to walk away.
You can hang out, you can hang out, just...
Let it clear out a little.
You want to have a little jazz joint in this, that's what happens. I don't think we have anything from Natalie in this one, right?
I was like...
Nothing from Natalie on this one, right?
No.
No, right? This is straight up, yeah, yeah. All right. All right, everybody got seats now? Everybody, okay. Sir? I know we've asked you to do this a thousand times before, but again, for the, being you are at a public hearing, just a quick synopsis of what you're looking to do with your site.
Good evening, how's it going? Yes, it's just, oh, I'm sorry, my name is...
We all know who you are, bud.
I'm sorry, my name is Harold, Harold Beckett. I have a barber shop there in Monroe. I'm just trying to open a restaurant slash jazz, play a little music with a band, a couple of guys, kids from the school come in and play, or whatever, and sit around.
Thank you, sir. I just ask you to take a seat for a second. Anybody wishing to speak on the HLB Enterprise application? Thank you, sir. I just ask you to take your seat for a second. Anybody wishing to speak on the H.L.B. Enterprise application? I'm gonna start with the first row. Second row. Third row. Fourth row. Anybody standing in the back or on the sides or on their heads or?
Any.
Okay, I gotta chuckle. Anybody at all that wishes to speak on the H.L.B. Enterprise application? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? Or for a motion to close the H.L.B. Enterprise, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Natalie, I know we got the updated water and sewage, right?
Yes, we did get a revised form. I have no further comments. I did send it to Mickey for his review. Um, if the board chooses to authorize counsel to prepare a draft resolution of approval, we anticipate that that could be executed by your next meeting.
Okay. Uh, any question, anybody have a question for Natalie? I'll offer a motion to have counsel draft a resolution of approval. Second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. You got off easy tonight.
Have a good evening.
Next item on the agenda, Woodbury Common Poly Sign. Discuss and review documents submitted for proposed poly sign with six tenant sign faces to be placed in an area between entrances A and B on Route thirty-two. Said property is located on Woodbury Common Property off Route thirty-two in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section two-two-five, Block One, Lot seventy dot two. Good evening.
Good evening. Bill Pendergast, Simon Property Group.
First appearance, you wanna just give us the?
Basically, the intention is the original entrance on Route thirty-two had a sign in between the inbound and outbound lanes. When the DOT widened the road, the sign had to be moved because it wouldn't fit there any longer. And because of their right-of-ways and distances, we couldn't put one back there. So that sign was relocated to the third entrance that they created on the cul-de-sac. The, the intention here is to add a new pylon sign to between the entrances on Route thirty-two. It would be twenty-five feet high, twenty feet wide, give or take. And it would be the third sign based on the information we've gotten from Natalie.
Does the board have questions for the applicant before we go to Natalie?
One other thing, the sign is very similar, but less in height than the one at Harriman Commons.
Okay.
You said it was less in height, plus.
Natalie?
Sure. So just to kind of be brief, because as Bill indicated, this would be the third monument sign on the site where two exist already. Um, the code allows one freestanding sign per site. The applicant did receive a variance for the second freestanding sign. Uh, this will need to be referred to the ZBA for a third freestanding sign. Um, just, you know, so the board understands the other two monument signs on the site. Simply List Woodbury Common Premium Outlets. This is for a multi-tenant directory sign. So it'll have a number of presumably stores listed, you know, on those panels that are designated to the same. So it is a little different than what is there already. Um, in addition to the number of signs being proposed on site, the renderings that we received indicate that the sign is larger than is permitted by code. Um, additionally, the height and the width of the sign are a little bit larger than would be permitted by code. Although I know Bill just described what is permitted by code, so presumably they're gonna modify their renderings to comply. Um, we just haven't received them yet. Um, so again, I think really the big thing here right now is the ZBA referral. Um, at the appropriate time, the board should discuss the number of colors that are proposed, similar to the other discussion we had earlier on another application tonight. The applicant will need to consider the width of the sign, you know, confirm the tenant listings on either side are the same. Uh, so you can consider the area requirements, um, the sign illumination and the verification on the structural stability of the proposed sign will also need to be provided at the appropriate time. Otherwise, we defer to counsel on seeker and public hearing recommendations.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
On the sign where you have the different stores listed, will that change or are you proposing a fixed set?
They would change, but that would probably be subject to being submitted to the building department for an approval of the same, the change in the sign panels themselves. So if one day it's Nike, it'll probably stay that way for a very long time. And then maybe two years later, you may have somebody that'll switch out signs because that tenant would want that sign there. So there, there could be some static changes in the sign, but not like every day. You know, it'd probably be more like a yearly basis or, or longer, we would think.
They would typically use their company logo?
That's something we would address later. I don't know that we need to talk about it tonight, but they would typically use their logo. And if, if possible, they would probably even like to use their own colors. But that again, may be subject to a change. If we get it approved with three colors and they wanna come back and it's a different color, they'd probably have to come back for approval for that color.
That's what I was concerned about.
Yeah.
Font and similarity in colors.
Typically, most monument signs of this type, like the one at Harriman Commons, all those tenants pretty much use their company logo and colors. So we would expect that may happen here too, but we may be a little ahead of ourselves until we talk to the, the ZBA first.
I would presume you'd have the first six tenants probably in line when you come to us, right?
We probably could, but we can talk about that. But I would think we'd be able to tell you who they're gonna be when we come back the next time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Eventually, that's something we can write the resolution. They're gonna be changing signs.
Yeah, we did it with all these over Woodbury Center and stuff like that. We, we had provisions in there. Okay. With the frequency the signs can be changed and stuff like that, so.
Keeping colors, fonts, things like that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Let's, all right. Motion to have Natalie draft a memo for referrals in the ZBA, second by Tommy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda, Schlesinger. Review revised materials submitted for proposed three-lot subdivision located off Sex, Sex, Sex Quahog. Oh, my God.
Sequoia.
Yeah, that trail. Scottamunk Road in Highland Mills. Said property is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section two-oh-four, Block One, Lots Two and Three. I was not an English major in college, you'd hate anybody. I was curious.
It's okay, yeah. Seen it enough.
They don't wanna see me, anyway.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
For the record, David Higgins from Langantelli Engineering and Surveying. And we are back with the plan. Uh, I believe representatives from my office were before the board a few months ago. I think that was October. And I believe there's a resolution that has been prepared, a resolution of approval. If there's any questions, certainly be happy to answer them, but.
Questions? Yeah. Now, this one's been two thousand eighteen or so, this one's for a lot.
Yes.
Natalie, you wanna go over yours?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Um, I know you do have a resolution to consider tonight. Uh, we do have a couple of suggested, or suggested changes to the same, but just quickly going through our memo. That memo is dated January twenty-seventh. Um, as noted in there, we think that many of our remaining comments could be handled during the plan signing process and/or we have recommended conditions for your action, uh, which counsel has incorporated in the resolution before you. Um, the only comment that I wanted to raise that I think may warrant some additional discussion is, um, and as part of the recent plan revision, there has been a modification to the municipal boundary line. Um, so I think Kelly has discussed that with the county and the applicant and can advise on that further. Um, but that was just the one thing that we had outstanding, you know, that the board should be aware of. Um, with respect to the changes in the resolution, we're going to suggest, or actually, up until the resolution was kind of circulated, we had been reviewing this as a preliminary plat. Um, it's noted on the applicant's plan that way and that's how we've structured our memos for this particular subdivision. There will not be a substantial number of modifications between preliminary and final. Um, and even the requirements, I think, are relatively straightforward. So with that being said, the applicant is pursuing preliminary and final at this time. So we've recommended that specific condition two A that is listed now as recommending compliance with our memo. Our last issued memo should be revised to also indicate and any comments raised by the village engineer to ensure compliance with the code requirements for a final subdivision plat. Um, and that way we can just check to make sure that all of those, there is a, um, in the code, there's actually like a list of plan requirements for both preliminary and final plats. So we'll just make sure that they've complied with all of those things. And obviously, if there was anything significant that came up, um, you know, we would recommend that they come back before the board, you know. And we can even copy you on all of that correspondence if that's what you would prefer. That's one thing. Uh, the second was, um, the way the condition two C is written in the resolution. It requires that prior to, um, plan signing, the applicant should file for coverage under the general permit. Um, and also there's a requirement to pursue dedication of the right-of-way to the village board. Uh, we've recommended, or we are recommending that filing for coverage under the general permit be moved to condition number five, which is prior to building permit. Um, so just, that would just be a modification and when that trigger would be required. Um, otherwise, that's all I have unless the board has any questions on our memo or this application in general.
No, anybody? Kelly, do you wanna opine on the boundary issues with South Bloom Grove?
Yes, um, so I spoke with the county, uh, and I also spoke with the applicant to confirm that that's everybody's understanding. What's actually, what actually happened, as you know, is that two of the four parcels that are included in this application are listed as being within the Village of South Bloom Grove. They currently have section block and lot numbers from the Village of South Bloom Grove. It was a filing error, I'll call it, with the Orange County Maps and the clerk, and the Orange County Clerk's Office. So this application, the properties are located within the Village of Woodbury. So this application actually merges those four lots and then re-subdives it into three lots. So any of the documentation that you'll see, the negative declaration, the draft resolution, since there are no tax lot numbers for the Village of Woodbury, uh, even though the property is in here, you'll notice that it references two parcels that are in the Village of Woodbury and two parcels located within the Village of Woodbury bearing Village of South Bloom Grove tax lot ID numbers. Uh, but they are within the Village of Woodbury and the county has indicated that so long as the plans are very clear that this is not changing any town boundaries, this is not changing any village boundaries, this will correct the boundary issue that we had on this project that we were hoping to resolve during this process. So this will resolve that. Long-winded, but there's your explanation.
Well, because of a clerical error.
I mean, really.
Someone didn't file the right paperwork. Does anybody understand what Kelly explained?
Yes.
Something got screwed up. Yes. All right. Um, any other questions, comments or concerns? I do have, you want me to go over the red line? You want me to go, you wanna go over the red line?
Well, since my voice is better than yours tonight, if you like.
I was really hoping you would say that.
All right. Well, mine's been like that for weeks, so, um, there are a, several changes. Um, I will go over them briefly. Some of them are just minor, but I'd like to point them out. So it is Victor Schlesinger instead of Vincent and it's being brought on behalf of S.Y.W. Property Holdings, LLC. So we've noticed that in the caption as well as the nature of the application. Um, I've separated out the email correspondence from Langantelli Engineering and Surveying PC for July twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, which is regarding soils testing. And then January fourth, twenty twenty-three, uh, it's between Langantelli and the Orange County Tax Map Department discussing the municipal boundary line. So that is a little further clarification under the heading of plans. Uh, number twenty-two, the meets and bounce description also included parcel A as well as lots one, two, and three. And then you did have an entity disclosure form that was received by the building department on October first, twenty eighteen. We did include a footnote to further describe the drawing numbers, description, and last revised chart that says the July twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen plan set consisted of three sheets, subdivision plan, site plan for Lot One, and sewage disposal system details. Plans were subsequently revised December seventh, twenty eighteen, which was four sheets, including site plan for Lot Two and Three, and September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, which was five sheets, which included the erosion control and general details, January thirtieth, twenty twenty, which was five sheets, January eighth, twenty twenty-one, five sheets, and then September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, is six sheets, which included the overall development plan. So just again, a little additional clarification in that footnote. And we did revise, um, some of the specific conditions. Uh, this takes into account the comments that Natalie was talking about. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, can I just read the specific conditions?
You're not gonna get an objection from me right now.
Okay. So number one, no building permit shall be issued authorizing the construction of any structure on any of these lots unless and until approval is received from the Architectural Review Board and the Planning Board for Ridge Preservation Review. Number two, prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant shall, A, comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three to the satisfaction of the village engineer and any comments raised by the village engineer to ensure compliance with code requirements for final subdivision plats to the satisfaction of the village engineer. B, comply with the memorandum of the village traffic engineer dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to the satisfaction of the village traffic engineer. C, pursue dedication of the Scottamunk right-of-way to the village board of the Village of Woodbury. Number three, this conditional approval is for a minor subdivision as it is currently defined in the Village Code, Section two-seventy-two dash twenty. That is, quote, "Any subdivision or series of subdivisions containing no more than four lots, excluding the parent parcel from which they are subdivided over a ten-year period," close quote. Then, therefore, any further subdivision of this property that exceeds four lots, excluding the parent parcel, shall be considered a major subdivision under the Village Code and be required to comply with the applicable provisions of the subdivision regulations. Number four, to the extent that this approval affects lands that are determined to ultimately be outside of the boundaries of the Village of Woodbury, this decision shall be restricted to apply only to those lands within the Village of Woodbury bounds. Number five, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall, A, apply for and obtain approval from the Planning Board, Architectural Review Board, in accordance with Village Code, Chapter Eight and Section three-ten dash thirteen. See specific condition number one. B, submit a well test, a well pumping test plan to the building department, which will be reviewed by the building inspector and consultation with the village engineer as needed. The testing performed must demonstrate that the proposed wells are acceptable in terms of quality and quantity to support each dwelling. C, perform percolation and deep pit tests to be witnessed by the building inspector or village engineer. The installation of all onsite sewage disposal systems shall be observed during construction by the building inspector or village engineer if requested by the building inspector. File for coverage, D, file for coverage under the general permit for stormwater discharges from construction activities. Proof of coverage shall be provided to the building department to the satisfaction of the building inspector. Number six, the applicant shall strictly, whoops, hold on. Shall strictly adhere to the limits of disturbance shown on the plan. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for a particular lot, the limits shall be staked in the field by a licensed land surveyor and confirmed by the building department. The limit demarcation shall be protected by construction fences until disturbance is complete and the area is stabilized. Seven, prior to driveway construction, the applicant shall be required to secure a highway work permit from the Village of Woodbury Highway Department. Eight, upon further development of the property, the connection between Country Hollow and Scottamunk Road may be required as deemed appropriate by the planning board, see Plan Note Six. Nine, the existing stone walls on the site shall be retained and protected to the maximum extent possible with the acceptance, with the exception of disturbance for the roadway drive, driveway road opening and the proposed curtain drain. Number ten, there shall be no wetland disturbance as part of this application. If wetland disturbance is found to be necessary, the applicant shall return to the planning board and secure permits required from all appropriate agencies. Number eleven, upon development of any residential lot within the proposed subdivision, adequate site distances shall be established and maintained through pruning or clearing within the right-of-way. Twelve, other than clearing and pruning required to maintain adequate site distances, healthy trees must be maintained along the roadway in lieu of the applicant having to plant street trees. And I also added in the two additional general conditions that have been in your recent resolutions, which we're missing from this one, which is that the project site shall be secured from unauthorized entry during all phases of construction until issuance of the final certificate of occupancy to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer. And the site shall be maintained in a clean, neat, and orderly fashion during all phases of construction to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer. And now I'm gonna start coughing.
Thank you, Kelly. I'll offer a motion to accept the draft resolution. I'll offer a motion to accept the draft resolution as beautifully read by counsel. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2018, it's one of the longest-standing ones we have in front of us right now.
Well, I'm glad to get it done, I'm sure you are also.
Have a good one, sir.
Thank you, you too. Have a great night.
Thanks. Have a good night, Dave. Goodbye.
All right. Last, but certainly not least, and I apologize if I get the name wrong, Inglis and Crisco, uh, review and discuss application for the construction of two steeples on the existing church building. Said property is located 520 Route 32 in Central Valley and is known as the Village Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 220, Lot 5, Lot 17. Do we have someone representing the applicant?
Hi.
How are you, sir?
Raymond Frank, I'm the church's in-house architect. Uh, good evening, thank you for your time. Um, like you mentioned, the project is just for a proposed facade improvement and beautification. Uh, we'll be doing some decorative molding designs, um, two new steeple towers on the side of the facade, and also adding the church signage at the front above the main entrance. Uh, we did receive some comments from, uh, I think it's the Architectural Review Board, and, um, we've addressed those comments. We have some updated drawings that we can show you. Um, if you have any other comments or questions, we can address those as well.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have questions for the applicant?
We do have the drawings that we can give to you now if you want to take a look.
Unfortunately, we have, that has to go through the building clerk, the Building Department and the clerk, it's gotta be stamped in, and then they'll redistribute, uh, to the board for us to review. Natalie, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, um, actually, I did miss your name, what was it?
Raymond Frank.
Um, Mr. Frank just describes the application very well and, and what they're proposing. Um, I guess I'll just kinda reiterate a little bit for the board's purposes and the public, obviously. Um, so this is proposed modifications to an existing religious building. Uh, the modifications include the construction of two towers with steeples on either side of the front facade, uh, new architectural treatments are proposed to the front facade, the applicant's proposing to paint the rear and sidewalls of the building and new shingles, uh, and two new wall signs are proposed. So, that's my summary of what's being proposed. Um, we have noted in our memo that due to the construction of the towers with steeples, compliance with your bulk criteria of the code is necessary, so the applicant should provide a plan, um, showing the setbacks from property lines for you to consider. Um, you know, with other religious use applications before you, there is, there are provisions in the code under LUPA, um, that allow the board to consider substantial burden waivers if needed. Um, so we'll look forward to getting that plan to confirm if any waivers or, um, you know, variances would be required. Um, most of the ARB comments that we had requested clarification among the documents, um, for consistency purposes, but also to, um, just clearly define what is being proposed and where. So, essentially, the ARB form, as you know, should list all the materials and changes that are proposed, and if possible, we would like to have, be able to kinda compare side by side, the ARB form and the renderings that are submitted, um, you know, just to match it up, so that should be clear for the board to consider. Um, we also recommended, if the board thinks it would be helpful, you could consider requesting the applicant provide photos of neighboring structures. Um, that is a recommendation of your ARB, uh, requirements of the code. Um, but again, that's to the board's discretion, so you can advise the applicant with respect to that. Uh, as far as the signage, uh, is concerned, we did note in our memo that we were, uh, reaching out to the Building Inspector for a determination on whether or not the 20-square-foot maximum applied to each individual sign or all of the signs. Uh, it does apply to all of the signs, so right now, the applicant is proposing what looks like a seal and a nameplate for the building. Those two signs should add up to less than 20 square feet, so that should be confirmed in an, in the applicant's, uh, future submission. Uh, the applicant should advise if the sign's going to be illuminated, um, and then if it is, there's certain criteria per code that should be complied with. And then, um, you know, I feel like a broken record talking about the number of colors and signs, but at the appropriate time, the board will need to consider whether or not a modification for the number of colors permitted for the seal, um, is appropriate. Uh, and then otherwise, I defer to counsel on, uh, public hearing requirements and seeker.
Thank you, Natalie. The, um, sir, the seal that's going above the front door, is that like a seal of the church, or?
It is, yes.
So, that would be like considered their branding almost?
Correct, yes.
All right, um, I don't know, maybe you do have it in your next submission, but if you could just give, um, a close-up of what that would look like, with the actual colors, that would help the board going forward?
Yes, it's been updated for that.
Okay, thank you. And the 36 feet to the top of the steeple, that is even with the peak of the roof line?
Uh, yes, and to the, to the top of the steeples and also to the roof line, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
Currently, we have a ramp for ADA access.
Correct, yes.
It's not showing on the windows.
Uh, we can, we can include that, then, we can update it, just show the ramp. Yes.
Does it conform to ADA parts?
It wasn't in the initial scope of work, but if, um, no.
Well, um, yeah, to save you some grief, when the Building Inspector goes out, he'll see the ramp, so you're gonna wanna make sure that ramp is compliant with...
Okay.
Whatever it needs to be.
Sure, understood.
Any other questions, concerns?
No, people actually, uh, see material for this one at all?
We want a what?
Board with materials.
Um, are you gonna, the renderings that you're gonna submit, are they, are the colors, um, the 3D renderings that are in the next submission, are they, do they represent the actual colors of the building?
Uh, yes, they do it better than the drawings that you have currently.
Okay.
So, we can, we can give you physical samples of...
If, um, if you could do a storyboard...
Okay.
That would be great. Typically, what we do this way when we hold, if we hold the public hearing, uh, when the, because now that we're back to in-person again, uh, the public can actually see the colors and the types of materials that are gonna be used, and then that gives, is given to the Building Department, uh, as part of the file, so when and if it does get approved, uh, when the Building Inspector is out, he has something to see in his hands and...
Sure.
Under, you know, just make sure it all matches.
Sure.
Just one clarification. You've mentioned you receive things from the ARB. We are the ARB.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sure both the ARB and the state of the...
Okay, that's why we received it from you.
No, we, we just flip, that's middle of the meeting.
I just did.
We turned our chairs around a couple back, and we're completely in board.
Gotcha, that's, that's fine.
All right.
The windows on the side of the church, is that glass being changed out at all or anything like that?
Uh, currently, we're looking just to keep it as it is.
Good. I don't have any, I think it's, it will be a nice addition to the church.
I think so, yeah.
No other questions?
No.
All right, so we will, um, so if you can, tomorrow, drop that stuff off at the Building Department, I have a representative drop it off at the Building Department. This way, they can stamp it, and they distribute it to us, and once we know that we have that material, we can schedule you for the review, and, um, if, make this, then this board can make a determination if a public hearing would be needed or not.
Okay. Um, is there, what's the requirement, the number of copies that we give?
Uh, what is it? 15.
15, okay. All right, thank you.
And they're open 8/4.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Hyatt Hills, Central Valley. This is the San Davis Church. This is to be Central Valley, not Central, it should be Highland Mills, not Central Valley.